Good evening, everyone. Today is June the 19th, 2023, and it's the City Council Budget Workshop with the City of
Recording in progress.
Please rise and join me in the pleasurable audience.
Pleasure to be here today. I'm Mayor of the State of Maryland, Senator Allen St. Martin, who stands on the occasion under the right of individual and liberty of justice for all.
Any, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Present.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
Heather Guadagnoli.
Here.
And Councilmember Belinda Livingston was unable to attend.
She should come in on Zoom, right? Send her in where she says she was.
Okay, she.
Whenever she shows up.
Okay.
Well, for now, we're definitely going to get started without her. I see that there's a box on the screen here. I'm just gonna walk over and get rid of it. It says "Got it." Are you gonna do that? Thank you. Didn't want to be recorded, did we? That was a big mistake. Perfectly okay. All right, we have one agenda item on the House Agenda. Before we get started, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Shirley for chairing the House. I understand you did a great job. So, that being said, let's move right into item number one, Discussion and Review of Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget. Hope everyone brought their draft budgets that were delivered to their homes on this. And I'm going to give the floor over to Mr. Riefler.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we're at the first budget workshop. And the next budget workshop we're gonna have is gonna be July 17th. And in that budget workshop is where we're gonna set the total bill rate. The property values came back, estimated from the property appraiser, a 10.64% increase in our current, our current bill rate of 2.034. Going to revenues, one, on page four, there's one change that I need to make from this draft. It's the license and registrations for the rental property registrations. We dropped that down, assuming that the statute, the state bill was going to pass, but it didn't. So, our valid registration, they were still staying the same. So, that's what we can change back.
Kyle, can I ask you a favor right quick? We're probably gonna be jumping around a little bit. And just to help everyone here, whenever you change page or change subject, would you let us know what page you're on?
Yes.
And case somebody else?
Okay. And I met with a lot of you individually, and what I did through all the operating accounts in departments is really kind of get closer to what we're spending and our expenditures. And also on the revenue side of the general fund, I bumped things up. Rental registration, or I mean, the facility rentals, like for the weddings, it came up today, where I looked at, on page five. Page five. We're making more money than we're budgeting in revenue, so we pushed it up slightly, but it could probably go a little higher. It came up today, west of where we're at today on the rentals. And right now, for wedding rentals, we're about $21K. For the, oh, I did.
Hello, one second. Ms. Livingston has joined the meeting.
Thank you.
Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you, but for some reason, my video is not working. I apologize.
Okay. Okay.
Hold on. Ms. Livingston, I was gonna ask you that you need the microphone for that, you're not speaking.
Is somebody moving that around?
Yeah, that'll fix him.
Okay. So, the total rentals, right now, we're at about $35,000 on the year revenue. Right now, we're budgeting $24,000, so that could creep up a little bit more. And then, like I said, like when we go through the expenditures for the departments, I got them all line item for line item, a tighter total we're spending. And that was a ball of mine for last week's budget. And when I met with you individually, we kind of went through each detailed line item. I'd like to get to one of the major points, which is on page 15, which is San Jacinto Department. That is our Waste Management contract. We have a representative for Waste Management, Tim Bowers, in the audience tonight. And he's here to answer any questions. Right now, our contract is expiring this September for the five-year term. We have the option to renew, but he's predicting higher increase in prices. 25% is the number I was given. We have the option to renew with them under the new pricing or a RFP that we did in 2018. But that is, that's something, he came in to answer any questions you have.
Counsel, first question's gonna be, we have a 4% cap. What up? Mr. Riefler?
This is something that we've done, attendance every year on the contract. There is a 4% cap. Last year, we had to go up more than that based on the operating prices, the labor, the material costs, something that we've adjusted every year.
I think it'd be a good idea to invite Mr. Bowers up to the podium, and that way the council can just ask questions directly. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Tim Bowers, the Government Affairs Manager for Waste Management. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Please allow me to begin by thanking all of you for your support. We've had a long, solid relationship with Bel Air beige over the last 20 years. Things going on, the salt waste industry is experiencing market reset, as are other industries. Labor, operating costs continue to rise and are outusing price adjustments. I think we've all seen inflationary pressures, whether it's buying groceries, gas, municipal services, garbage trucks. Rising costs and the impact on the salt waste industry is affecting everyone and everyone in our industry. The things we're seeing, drastic increases in the price of steel. Steel's used to make trucks, steel's used to make the containers that we use, the metal containers, from like labor costs. The labor costs are up, and we've had to raise our wages. We also had to raise our benefits. And we've also had to hire additional HR resources to keep people coming in, keep prospecting for new folks that we need in the operation. Again, fuel cost, everybody knows what's happened with gas prices and diesel fuel. And then maintenance of truck parts to keep the trucks running, we've had to increase our rates. Due to these unforeseen unprecedented market conditions, which the city or Waste Management anticipated at the time of our contract, which was executed in 2018, and the continuation of these inflationary pressures, we will have to make, ask for a price increase, a significant price increase. Waste Management estimates that our contract renewal rate will increase markedly to better keep pace with the operating cost. And Critical Services in your community, we're estimating a price increase, not necessarily a price increase, but a new contract price for, a re-contract renewal estimated 25%. I know that that's, that's a lot, that's tough. And that's why I'm here to talk to you folks about it, let you know that this is where, this is where Waste Management is. We would welcome the opportunity to discuss exercising a renewable option with our current agreement with Mr. Riefler. We can explore options that may reduce costs. We'd have to talk, find out what there might be. Again, we welcome that opportunity. There are intangible benefits of renewing the contract with Waste Management here in Bel Air. We're a North American company, the largest provider in North America, with 4,500 employees and 17,000 trucks. And we have global resources throughout the United States, but we're locally here, we're in Clearwater, that's where our trucks come out of. We appreciate your business and hope to continue our partnership. And I'd like to thank you for considering our request here. Be willing to take any questions if you might have.
Yes, my thing. First of all, Kyle, is the, I see 24.5% increase. Is that factoring in the letter from Waste Management?
Yes, that is, so our last contract was at $330,000, and estimated 25% increase in renewal of the $413,000.
Okay, so now the question's gonna go right to the, we have a franchise agreement with a 4% cap. When does that agreement expire?
The current agreement comes to term this year, it expires. So, you have an option to renew for five years, or go back out.
Or go, go somewhere else. Okay, so there is no cap on the coming years?
No.
We'd have to negotiate that. Okay, thank you. Mr. Baker?
Mr. Bowers, I figure we get about 100 pickups a year, because we get pickups on Monday, Thursday, we get just about every holiday unless the landfill is closed. I think last year, we got 100. If we knock that down, because I'm figuring the pickups are your charge, you know, sort of now, or $3,354 approximately a pickup, which is gonna be increased to about $41.77, $4,200. On the holidays, I'm sure you're paying your guys double time or tri, I hope you're paying triple time. That, double time? Okay. Plus the holiday, or just double time?
Double time on the holidays, yes.
Plus the holiday, too? So, what I'm saying is, that figure now goes to $6,000, $6,500. If we knocked off like six of those holidays, that would bring us to about $36,000 savings. Would that correct or not?
Well, we would take a look at it. We could put a pencil to it one time, one time a week, collection.
I'm not saying one time a week, I'm just saying eliminate the holidays and repay double time. We'd get 100, I think we had one, maybe two not pickups, because the landfill was closed, I think it was January 1st this year. We fell on Monday, we didn't have pickups, so we had to pick up on Thursday, so we got credit on that. I don't know if there was another, so I'm just calculating about 100. But there's about another four to six holidays that we also get pickup, because of the change that got with the policy. So, if we took those six holidays and didn't get a pickup, I'm estimating about $6,500, $200.
We'd be willing to take a look at that. That's something we haven't thought about, we could look at all the holidays, not picking up on those days, and take them again.
Just a reminder, too, is we have Wednesday recycled, so that's another, so we have really a given service three days a week.
And I'm just curious how everyone feels about producing their coverage. I've always been amazed that if we did, we had garbage pickup on holidays, and I always thought that that was kind of weird. At times, I was grateful, depending upon how much garbage was in the house for Christmas morning. But still, I was always a little amazed that we were offered that service. I will commend Waste Management. You guys are phenomenal. You pick up just about anything. Your guys are friendly, they do a great job. I don't see litter scattered around the cans whenever they're empty in them. I think you're phenomenal, so I hope that we can come to some sort of an agreement and continue using your services. Doesn't work out, doesn't work out, but I will say that you guys do a great job.
I realize this is a big ask, but we put the pencil to it, we're under all these pressures with inflation and everything going on, buying all of the things, supplies and messes that there are things that we need. And that's why I wanted to come and talk to you today, to let you know that we're looking at, that's a ballpark figure. Because we realized that you could go off the bid if you wanted to go off the bid, but kind of wanted to gauge whether you wanted to continue to negotiate, or if you were thinking about, you know, doing the bid.
Counsel.
Just a quick question maybe out of it. What was your annual profit last year?
They were probably 18%, something in there.
I'm talking millions, right? How many millions that you made a profit?
We're a $20 billion corporation.
Yeah. And you're, we're getting a 25% hit? That's a big ask. You guys own the landfill?
No, we, everything we take, no, stupid amounts down.
Mr. Roberts, your question?
I do for Kyle. So, Kyle, you said 2018, 2019, that timeframe is when we initiated the current contract that we're under, correct?
Yes, '18, yes.
At that time, did we go out to bid?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
We did, we got it on five different ways to start this bid.
And that was pre-COVID, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, this 4% cap that was placed off, we had no idea what the market was gonna do. I would say that it's probably fair to ask for an increase, but I don't know if 25% is in our wheelhouse. But I'm also wondering if it's negotiable on the cap going forward, because I think the markets are starting to cool some. And maybe if we were to swallow some of this and say, okay, here's our new rate, but maybe our cap is a little bit lower than where it is now.
We could talk.
Other things, other things to consider. I think probably it's a fair statement to say, we'd like to see you sharpen your pencil and see what you can come up with.
And as noted, the mayor said the cost of our economy now, last year, I think diesel fuel was close to $6 a gallon, and now it's $4.25.
Mr. Notaro, did you have a question?
Just a comment, I would be in favor of negotiating with Waste Management, and the city and Waste Management, giving what they can give. They've been a wonderful service to us for years, and I would like to keep them.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Bowers?
I have one additional question. You indicated that there were maybe some cost-saving approaches. Was that just to cut service? Is that the only way to save costs? Is there something else that you had actually?
That was, that was one, but we could also look at, you know, if there's a possibility of doing something with routing. The idea of the holidays came up that we would entertain, too. So, it might be, once we start to sit down and talk, there may be some other opportunities there that could help us work out, work out a deal.
Okay. I guess, I mean, I don't think we can, first of all, I want to agree with everything the mayor said. I've only been here four years, and the service that you guys provide is off the chart. The staff that you have that work for you are amazing. That being said, I think from my perspective, I would have a difficult time answering the question if somebody confronted me, constituents, and said, well, Chief Wiz, why didn't we put this out for bid? That doesn't mean we're necessarily constrained to take the low bid, we have a lot of experience and knowledge of what you guys have done for the city. But I think at the same time, it would be in the city's best interest if we did go out to bid and received, how many bids, how many companies bid the last time, Kyle? I'm just curious.
About five.
Okay. So, we would have an opportunity to review those and evaluate. Again, I've been involved before with bids, and you don't always select the lowest bid. I mean, I take bids for my own projects at my house, and all these people always bid, there's a lot of those factors that melt into that.
I think it would be a good test to see where the market is at, just a sanity check.
Right.
I would still, Kyle, when do we need to make this decision whether we move forward or put it out for bid?
Pretty soon, because we don't have at least, at least half advertised for a month. So, I had to be able to put it together and then get it in the paper and then use the time.
Would you say it would be in the next council meeting, next regular council meeting, or is it?
That would be okay, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, my recommendation would be to, I would like to give Mr. Bowers the opportunity just to see what, something that we can look at as maybe a middle-of-the-road kind of thing. And if we don't like it, or we feel like maybe we need to do what Mr. Roberts suggested and put it out for bid completely, I would, I'd still like to give Waste Management, Waste Management, the opportunity to stay on if possible. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Mr. Riefler?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Bowers. I appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
When we get back to, our preliminary contracts, we have a law enforcement contract.
What bid?
13. 5% increase. I got the actual number for this year, it's gonna be 7.9% decrease.
Kyle?
It's going from $514,000 to $13,000. We're not ready to move on.
Okay.
This is, I know I asked this question earlier, and I didn't want to bring it up with Waste Management here, but what is the cost for services per month, per resident? For, I guess we can only look at the single family, because I don't know, you know, the condom's a little different on the size of container they have. But what is it currently, and what would it be at the 25% increase? Because I think you said that we're charging a little more than what?
Yeah.
It's paying out, so.
Right now, let me pull. I think we charge 48, I have a hold, it's a fraction to get that number. And right now, with our revenue, our actual, our actual revenue for our garbage collection is $342,000. So, it's higher than what, 330, or 325 that our current contract is at, moving forward. So, all nine monthly, the residents for a single-family home are paying $48. And then each other.
The robust 12th safety increase.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. I should know that, because I have to fill a column. Don't really pay.
Okay, please continue.
Thank you.
So, the law enforcement contract is going off at 7.9%.
Bid?
Okay, you said.
13.
That is on bid, 13. And then, the code enforcement contract, that hourly rate is going off 7.5%. So, what I budgeted was the 4% of lowering the hours to 12 hours per week, which was at $33,000, but a bit more, closer to $34,750. But I think since the last year, we budgeted 20 hours per week, we started off a low budget here at 15 hours, we was working three, five-hour days, and I feel that you could work three, four-hour days and get them done.
So, Kyle, I'm sorry, so back, back to the law enforcement real quick. What would the adjusted proposed budget for 23, 24 be?
So, if you look at the departmentals for that, there's $10,000 for additional supplemental public safety. So, this year's contract is $549,000, and this year, we'll go up to $592,000 and change, plus the $10,000 supplemental public safety. You didn't use any of that this year, but that would be if you, if you did something extra, some kind of specialty sale, or just a new trap, or something where we requested extra service or extra need working.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kyle, could you repeat, you said 592?
Yes.
I limited it to 586.
Yeah, so that, that is, that's the first, the draft of the budget before I got the actual numbers, so that's a 5% increase plus the $10,000 for additional supplemental public safety.
So, the next time you see a drop to the budget, we'll have the 592. 586. 52. 18. 586.
Any questions on law enforcement or code enforcement?
So, we're looking to see if the code will work out, or dial, or the proposal is dialed back, the contract and services for code enforcement, bring more of it in-house than what we currently are.
So, the number of hours you were reducing, like Kyle ever talked about this morning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so last year's budget would be at 20 hours per week. We didn't reduce that this year, or we're proposing to come already down to 12 hours per week, because we did 15.
Okay.
And that, that lower hourly amount in code enforcement relates to the full-time position in the departmental for the annual assistant proposal. And that would be, we had it in there for part-time, 20-hour per week position, it'd be $12 per hour. And what you'll see on page 12, it reflects what it would cost for 18 hours per hour for full-time. And the detail, page ten, on the departmental detail, where you can see it broken out. Then, I'd like to point out on page 21, beginning to the general fund capital improvement projects. That is the replacement of the recent release, that increase, we're at $3,500 per year, increase of $6,000, to stay on track of what the replacement we're gonna have to do with the swim zone. Page 23, that draft shows the computer hardware, software continuing to be saved at $45,000 per year, proposing that with the $13,750 we have for good, where we don't need to add savings by now in the out-years. adult savings plan out in the out years. So, getting into the capital, or the capital, page thirty-eight, that street resurfacing, that shows the note we got into this year, and that shows the portion that five hundred and twenty-six, two hundred is the portion of loan that's going to the street or sort of saving them, we're spending it in the top in twenty-twenty-four, that's six hundred and seventy-six thousand. And you'll see the same relation for these worksheets in the stormwater. But in the stormwater fund, for the valley curve, there's going to be stormwater improvements. And it's just each portion of the loan that we estimated, that broke it out, and adder, I can build a total view on analysis of the debt issuance, rather broke out the percentages, and how we're going to track the interest in repaid loans. And then, capital fund, page forty-five, replace city sewalls. The next sewall is going to be replaced just in South Park, but in this current year's budget in twenty-twenty-five, I raised the rate of twenty thousand dollars in the savings plan to build up some capital to do the city hall, sewall, if we choose to. But we'll back there, but it's not the approach. On, again, the marina fund starts on page forty-seven. Note to, oh, the revenue, we're currently, from our slipper allowance, we increased the rate per the resolution that we passed a couple of years back, our current slipper revenue is projected to be around sixty-nine thousand. It's the one improvement plan project is for the dock improvements. We currently have, that's basically one, we currently have fifty-two thousand saved up, and we've been saving at a rate of seven thousand five hundred dollars per year. With the fifty percent of the pylons in the marina that we've, going, we went out for bid to replace, that came back in seventy thousand dollar mark. We don't quite have that saved yet, but I propose that we at least raise it up to ten thousand per year, to save a little bit more aggressively for when we're doing to replace the pylons. Page fifty-five, in the stormwater fund. Again, that is the valley curve, you know, see the capital revenue and the projects going to be spent at the seven hundred and thirty-one thousand in twenty-twenty-four. And then, same, same type of situation in the stormwater improvements, you know, those are the stormwater improvements because this will get us through all the out years that we had with our loan, and we got our capital improvement revenue plus available for the stormwater fund, and then, for all the projects we've done in twenty-twenty-four. And that really touches on all the main changes coming up, is there any questions that we're talking about?
Kyle, question regarding stormwater, currently we have, we're charging a maintenance fee to the residents. Can we get some, look at what that looks like, and does that fee need to be adjusted any for the out years, you know, as we continue to, we do all these improvements, but do we have the budget to maintain going forward?
Yeah, right now, we're per unit, so per common unit, per single-family home, we're, our assessment is fifteen dollars, so thirty dollars by monthly, and that, the actual that comes in is that one hundred and seventy-seven thousand is stormwater assessments. The, if you look at our, with our stormwater projects, you know, what we're doing, the valley curve replaced with plus and minus operating costs, it's much lower than what is needed to balance that, but one thing that keeps going up every year is the fifth side, thirty-eight, forty-six, or four sixteen, then storm drain repairs and other maintenance, that are increased because if you look at it in the budget of thirty thousand, in last year's budget, and we're typically spending much more, and then that's when we go, we get a barn coal oyster buildup in the pipes, we have to clean, jet back them out, and also when the pipes start failing, we have to line them. So these problems get taken care of as we move through with our projects in the different streets that we're doing, but there's also going to be, you know, a lot of pipes that may sure have cleaned out on a regular basis over twelve inches, they tend to accumulate barn coal quickly. So that's a price, I mean, I've noticed it just the years I've been here, with some of those stuff that is jet back company that we use, but their pricing's all kind of increased, sort of like everything else.
So would it be fair to ask for a budget, at least for the barn coal removal, what that looks like? Or I think city staff does that, and then, I don't know how often, you'd have to hire an outside service to do additional work, but at least see what that looks like for city staff and make sure that we're, we're at least getting enough to offset those costs.
So the city staff goes through, and they're doing it now on a monthly basis, they go through to each one of those one-way check valves, and they, you know, go down, scrape the barn coal off, and sort of they take the function. Anything that gets accumulated in the pipes, which is more on pipes that do not have valves on them because the barn coal's got all into them, that has to be contracted out for, you know, the truck and the blades to blast it out.
Well, so from understanding, Kyle, you just want to, you want to explore the idea of making sure that the stormwater assessment revenue is enough to cover that ongoing repairs? That's right.
Maintenance.
The maintenance of it.
Yeah.
Because obviously, you can see that the one hundred and seventy-seven, one hundred and seventy-five a year is not going to pay for your big project, that's why you had to take on all that debt. Right, right.
So Kyle, is the cleaning of the valves, is that, that's basically in the operating expense, is that correct?
Yeah, that gets broken up, the way it works is the public works employees, eighty-five percent of their personal services is in the public works department, and then fifteen percent of it gets moved over to the stormwater fund for the estimated portion of work that goes to our stormwater.
Okay.
So right now, we have that, that's something we said, I mean, we started the assessment, the number of fifty percent of their time is dedicated to the stormwater, so that's like, that's the ratio.
Any other questions?
Just a general question, where is the line item that shows our mortgage payment for this building? Where is what pays them?
It's part of the debt service cost, it's on page thirty.
I know we've discussed this before, this is my fault, so do we have an exact, if we continue to pay, do we have a prepayment penalty?
In this building?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if we extrapolate this out, because we're not going to prepay any of it, when is the date that it'll be paid off? I mean, is there a specific month, day, year?
At the end of twenty-twenty-five, isn't it?
Yes.
At the end of twenty-twenty-five? Like December twenty-twenty-five, around that time period? Or the first of the year you're talking about?
We all, we have this question every time. And we're getting close to the end.
When we get the budget, we analyze paying off, it didn't make sense, it's the credit rates.
So that, I mean, that's great news, it's twenty-twenty-five, that'll be here tomorrow.
I brought that up before, so I see it's four years, so I just brought that up this year, basically, four more years.
Yeah, so twenty-twenty-five is much sooner. Yeah, two years.
Because we gave the four days of forty thousand, one sixty year plus interest payments.
Would that be a more big part?
Bernie has the mortgage.
Okay, thanks.
Miriam, white off the mortgage.
We're going to get an answer.
I don't know what month, I don't know what month, getting my digital key was the answer.
Yeah, send us an immediate maker, so it's on our calendar that day.
Right.
And what?
So, there's a, the full payments go twenty-four, twenty-five, and then there's only forty thousand dollars in twenty-six, so that could be December.
Okay, one, four.
Yeah. That'd be December of twenty-six.
December twenty-sixth, involving nine.
Kyle, is there anything else in this budget that we need to be aware of? I know you and I, we spent a good hour and a half going through every single page on this, but it seems like there were a couple more things that you pointed out, I mean, the biggest, biggest changes of all was obviously the waste management issue, and then the sheriff's department, their services, but was there anything else that was really stuck out?
Um, I mean, outside of the main contracts, which kind of outside of the control, we talked about that, this one, the full-time position, that was an increase. Everything else, I really, there were some things that came up that increased slightly because we're spending more, but a lot I tried to reduce in each channel, so it'd be closer to what we're actually spending. So there's not, there's less, you know, like access money over each year.
Heather, you had a comment?
Sorry, Kyle, the insurance, you didn't talk about that tonight, he had...
Oh, yes, that's good, so the insurance, yeah, the insurance, and it's better to go to the detail. I'm on the front panel. Twenty-eight, ten.
There was a big increase also.
Oh, yeah, page eleven, at the bottom of the start of it, and then there's a top of the extra, is the, is all the listings, and the highest increase is the property insurance, and florally, the city's told me to plan on a seventy-five percent increase in the property insurance. We won't see those numbers until closer, like August time period. I have another municipal insurance company that's going to provide numbers to us to compare.
Twelve is thirteen, I believe.
Yeah, twelve, top twelve. So we'll see property, it says communities that have a net full property in all its parts, you'll see seventy-five percent, is what it was estimated, was estimated, to plan on. Everything else, they told me to plan on a ten percent increase in the line rate, with the, what does it count? You know, this time.
Hey, I don't see where it's marked, I think it's marked, I know. Is it supplemental page?
Yeah, it's on supplemental, the, that general, right, it's what?
Oh, there we go.
Was there any claims that we made?
No.
It's because of the storms. We're paying for all the damage down south.
Well, that's on wind. It's what?
Overall damage.
I think this general liability property shouldn't go up that much.
Have we had any claims in the last two years?
The structure though, I don't think so, liability is the structure. Well, they told him seventy-five percent for the property, and then the other one's ten percent.
The only claim we ever had recently is the sign, that was seven years ago, for our property insurance.
So we had it again?
But they said it's going up, he said everything else that's happened in the state.
And he's had any luck with the quote from another company?
I'm waiting on that, they told me towards the end of the month that it's, so we can compare.
Did you say more than a better company?
I think we just slammed, it's the first thing they asked, are any claims in the last three to five years?
I said, yes, so, yes.
Maybe, some companies aren't even quoting.
You are so right. What's your zip code?
Yeah, I don't know what happens where you hit this point where you're uninsurable and you have a debt. What happens?
What happens when you have a mortgage?
That's what I'm going to say.
So is it oxygen, or the, the five-month warranty?
I think it is, and they really.
They knock you out of your, you know, ability to buy.
Yeah, you got it.
And this is my argument, I had to handle reviews, Scott. Yeah, good luck.
All right, I know this meeting has ran very short, I'm actually, I'm sorry that we're not moving into the workset, regular work session next, but it's scheduled for Wednesday, so... Does anyone have any other questions for Kyle at this point, or Heather at this point?
Yeah, this is just really tangential, small stuff, we just appointed two new people to the Pinellas County, was it flood board, Frank, something like that? I just want to make sure that they got money, the budget for them is increased, I guess for travel and whatever they do. That's all, I mean, it's really, it's only a couple of times a year. Okay, I just want to make sure you're okay.
No, it's just an information, you know?
Yeah, it's all, it's all conversal.
Again, guys, we're over there, it's hard.
I will say for the most part, this was one of the easier budgets to read and lay down properly. I didn't have a lot of questions whenever I was reviewing it, of course, it helped having Kyle spend a couple hours with me, but everything looks, for the most part, and really, there's not a whole lot to ask about it. I'm hoping we can get this garbage collection problem resolved, and I also hope that our, we can come up with a better word in what we're getting right now on the insurance. Last chance, yes?
Uh, former councilman Clay Dunn, which one of the questions was to him? He put together a flight to be all kind of staying, keep it back.
Excellent job, Kyle.
Yep.
Matty and everybody.
Because you guys are the ones that got to put the numbers together.
This is all there is, I can hold this until break time.
How about slideshow? Family stories. Are you looking for a motion?
Last chance to ask any questions or talk about the budget in this meeting. Again, a great job, Kyle and Heather, appreciated.
I have a motion.
Ray motion to adjourn.
Is that good?
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.